Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order right now, 7:02 PM, Wednesday, April 14, 2021. I'd like to reconvene City Council's executive agency to the Westminster Redevelopment Agency Meeting. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Tom.
Yeah?
Vice Mayor Nguyen. Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Doe?
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho?
Here.
And Councilmember Manzo?
I'm here.
Yeah, all councilmembers are present.
Thank you so much. Next, we have salute to the flat will be councilmember Ho invocation will be Vice Mayor Nguyen, and please stand.
Please stand and follow my lead. Hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please remain standing.
This is my behalf for invocations. Heavenly Father, Provider of strength, we pray that as leaders of our community, we might have the insight and courage to serve the citizens of Westminster with wisdom and truth. We ask for your guidance in making decisions that affect our community, ensuring that decisions made this evening are in the best interests of our city and all its citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Ho and Vice Mayor Nguyen. Next, we have report from City Attorney.
There's nothing to report from closed session.
Thank you. Expert communication, none. Report from City Clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council just wanted to announce that tomorrow, the Westminster Family Resource Center and UCI will be having a virtual presentation regarding COVID vaccine. We have information regarding that on our city's website. Sessions will be held. There will be three sessions held in three different languages. So it'll be held in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese at various times for our afternoon. So again, that information's available on our website. In addition, we also have Robert Acosta, our emergency services coordinator, who will be providing updates.
Good evening. Do you can hear me okay? Okay, thank you. Tonight's update on Operation Independence and the COVID response will be relatively short. I'll start with COVID. California and Orange County, the numbers have improved in most categories. And in those that it hasn't improved, it's stabilized. Locally in Westminster, over the last 14 days, there have been 64 cases. That gives us a 14-day average of 4.9 cases per 100,000 residents. So we're slightly higher than the county average. However, those numbers have been trending down and now have stabilized for a sustained period. Orange County remains in the orange tier. In my last report, the healthcare agency was hopeful that Orange County would advance into the yellow tier by late April. However, they recently have reconsidered that. And even though the numbers have stabilized, the current thought is we likely will enter the month of May remaining in the orange tier. Internally, the city has had one reported case since my last report. This case does not appear to be workplace transmission. And to date, we still have zero cases of confirmed workplace transmission. The vaccination effort is next. I'll talk about that now. Tomorrow, the state will open up vaccines to all people over 16 years of age. All individuals that are eligible are encouraged to register onto Athena to acquire an appointment. And the appointments are coming pretty readily after you sign up within a few days and a week at the most. As everyone is pretty much aware, the CDC put a hold on the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine yesterday. However, the vaccine effort continues at a very robust pace in Orange County. There are now many avenues for people to get vaccinated. People can get vaccinated at one of the three county super pods, at local pharmacies, at our community pods, and at certain medical care groups. The city of Westminster continues to strive to be part of the solution for this pandemic. Just yesterday, the city held its third community pod. These pods focus on Westminster residents and employees that work within the city. Over the last few weeks, we've successfully administered over 1,200 vaccinations. These community pods are a result of a partnership of local pharmacy, the healthcare agency, and the OCFA. And I'd like to specifically thank Diana Dobbert and her staff and the rest of the city staff that assisted. We achieved help from every section in the city as well as our cert members. The employees and the volunteers were tirelessly to make these pods run smoothly. And the healthcare agency was very impressed with how efficiently it ran. The city of Westminster, switching to testing now, the city of Westminster continues its onsite testing clinic at City Hall. That's five days a week, the tests are available. Signups are requested and can be done at the Orange County Healthcare website. A new addition to through the county is for individuals that are already vaccinated. And those that use the Athena app, they will have access to digital passports. And they were uploaded yesterday. The passports can be accessed by logging on to the Athena app and scrolling through the site. And the passports are a QR code that verifies that you've been back, that you've been fully vaccinated. The healthcare agency has a hotline available for the community if there's any questions specific to COVID or the vaccines. And that number is 714-834-2000. And that's all, that's the end of my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you so much for your report. Do we have any question or comment?
Have a question about the passport. Is that something that you need to each individual? Or is that a nationwide database where, you know, people required to have been vaccinated to be in certain to travel? Or is that like a very unique individual? Is this a huge national database?
As I understand it, and it was communicated to us in our recent Zoom call at the county, is we're running a test pilot. If you go onto Athena, it has a QR code that if you scan it, it shows a virtual vaccination card that people have received. So there's no specific use for it yet. But the vision is that people may have to use that to go to concerts or sporting events or maybe even to travel. But there's no definitive path yet. But it's up and loaded. And if you have already been vaccinated, it's something you can see through the Athena app. I'm sorry, you're muted, sir.
Councilmember Doe, you have to unmute.
So each individual have to lock on and verify or print out that QR code, car or something, right? Is that, you know, each individual who got vaccinated, got a car. And you fill out your own names and all that stuff. And you're supposed to keep that one. And now and now we have a database. We have the digital passport. I just want to, it's kind of interesting. I just want to know more about it, so.
Well, I can do some research for you and certainly bring back a report. But the way it was communicated to myself and my peers is it's a, it's, it's, it is to assist the person in that is vaccinated so they don't have to carry their card everywhere they go or to take it to places where they potentially could lose it. But it's not to replace the card, it's just an alternative to the card. So you can use either or.
So is there any other comment or question? I see none. Thank you so much for your report. We really appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So City Clerk, do we have anything else from your department? No?
No.
That's good.
I can't. Actually, I do. I'm sorry, I do. So just to announce to everyone, the city this year, due to the pandemic, we're not able to have a Black April event in person. We are, however, doing a virtual Black April event. And that will be aired on PCTA and of course, on our websites on April 30. We'll announce the time as we get closer to that date.
Thank you so much for the update. And next, we have special presentation, proclamation for the DMV Donate Life California Month. This is the event that I've been participating for the last 14 years. After I got elected, Westminster City Council, I never miss any year. Even last year, we had pandemic and I participate online, virtually. And the last year event was really, really, really nice and successful. Really want to thanks all the volunteer, all the sponsor, and all the participant who've been involved with this meaningful event. So on behalf of Westminster City Council, we have a proclamation. And I'm going to read that. And after that, I'd like to invite Ms. Linda Tyer from One Legacy to speak. Proclamation, DMV Donate Life California Month, April 2021. Whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life given acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion of those in need. And whereas more than 108,000 individuals nationwide and more than 21,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average, 17 people die each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. And whereas deceased organ donors saved more than 33,000 lives last year. And whereas a single individual donation of a heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, and ribs, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissue can save and heal the life of more than 75 others. And whereas millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissue, marrow, and blood. And whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition. And over 17 million Californians have signed up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored. And whereas California residents can sign up with the state authorized Donate Life California Donor Registry when applying for or renewing their driver license or ID card at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Now therefore, I, Tretar, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of Vice Mayor G. Charlie Nguyen and councilmembers Ty Doe, Kimberly Ho, and Carlos Manzo, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as DMV Donate Life California Month in the city of Westminster in recognition of National Donate Life Month and encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver license or ID card or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org. So now I'd like to invite Ms. Linda Tyer from One Legacy.
Good evening, Mayor Tom, Vice Mayor Nguyen, and councilmembers Ho, Contreras, and Doe, and other city officials and residents of the city in attendance. My name is Linda Tyer. And as a volunteer One Legacy Ambassador, I am thrilled to accept the city of Westminster's proclamation recognizing April as DMV Donate Life California Month. I'm grateful to share with you the story of my son's gift of life to others through his organ donations. This is my son. His name's Matthew. Matthew was born on the first day of summer, June 21, 1984. You can see his Pacific Islander heritage in his infectious smile, laughing brown eyes, and sense his Hawaiian spirit of aloha. Although challenged with Tourette Syndrome and ADD, he nevertheless experienced the world head-on, a risk-taker who just loves sports. In his youth, whether playing football, hockey basketball, baseball, his name on that jersey solidified that he mattered, that he belonged. In his adult years, his life's journey began to detour down paths strewn with obstacles and shattered dreams. But his love of family and compassion for others remains strong. And he always felt empathy for those less fortunate. On November 19, 2017, just days before Thanksgiving, at the age of 33, my son's tragic death brought light into the darkness to five others through the donation of his heart, liver, lungs, kidneys, and pancreas. My family's decision to donate his organs is what he would have wanted, to help others. A month after he passed in December of 2017, I received a letter from his liver recipient. A wife and mother of an only daughter, her condition was critical. And then, and then came that phone call, we have a match. She was born on Christmas Day, and her husband wrote to me that because of Matthew's gift, she was able to celebrate her best Christmas birthday ever with her loved ones. God works in wondrous ways. On New Year's Day, 2020, my son was one of 44 honorees whose floor graph pictures graced the Donate Life Rose Parade float titled Light in the Darkness. Family shared handmade, families handmade. I'm going to share with you if you can see this. The families of those 44 honorees handmade each of their loved ones' pictures using only natural seeds and grains as the rose parade committee required. It was a beautiful tribute to all of these, those honored on the first day of January. Nationally, the number of patients waiting for organ transplants is over 108,000. You could fill the Los Angeles Colosseum with people waiting for that phone call saying, we have a donor match. In California alone, there are more than 22,000 people who could fill the LA Forum at a Lakers game who are also waiting for that life-saving phone call. Through your amazing support these 14 years, your city can help lower those numbers. Please use the amazing ready-made tools to promote Donate Life through your city's websites, your email newsletters, and other social media platforms. Now, everyone can have become a pink dot donor on your driver's license by simply going to your local DMV or go to www.donatelife.org. As a donor mom, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for letting me share my son's story with you. Though the gift very rare, the need is very great. So I welcome all of you to join Donate Life and considering being a donor if you have not already. And I appreciate the city of Westminster for having me as your guest. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your personal story. And one more time, on behalf of the Westminster City Council, we'd like to honor your son. And we want to thanks for your dedication to support a really good and meaningful event. So really, really appreciate that. And our city, we so honored to support Donate Life event every year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. So next, we have oral communication.
Yes, this is the time of the meeting where members of the public may address the city council on anything within the council's subject matter jurisdiction. That being said, we have several ecomments that I'd like to read. And then we have, of course, requests for speakers to verbally address you after. First ecomment is from Diana Lee Carey, and it states, Dear Honorable Council, I urge you not to support either of the proposed Sheldon and Associates plans for Civic Center development. I want to take this opportunity to thank the city staff for this comprehensive report that clearly identifies the myriad of issues that have not been addressed, researched, or considered in the formulation of the Sheldon proposals. These include, but are not limited to, area stakeholder and community participation, coordination with the goals of the general plan, and the questionable financial projections relied upon to fund the project. I do not believe the city should undertake this project due to our precarious financial future and the inadequate planning by the developer. Again, that's from Diana Lee Carey, former Westminster Councilwoman. The next one is from Alex Stevens, grandson of Robert L. Stevens Jr. And it reads, my family has lived in Westminster for 60 years. My grandparents bought their house here for $13,000. Now their home is worth over $600,000. Young people starting out in life can't afford anything even close to that. Are you doing anything to lower home prices? Are you doing anything to try to implement rent controls? Are you doing anything to stop building multiple houses on originally single-house lots? Again, that's from Alex Stevens. Next one is from Linda Midendorf. And she states, good evening, Mayor, Council, and City staff. My name is Linda Midendorf, and I reside in Westminster. I am a part of a small group of community members called Westminster Hope and Opportunity, also known as WHO. We would like to invite you to be part of our book drive coming up this Monday, April 19, from 3 to 5 at the Family Resource Center. Westminster Hope and Opportunity is helping the Orange County United Way promote literacy during this public health crisis. We would love for you to join us in helping the most underdeserved members of our community access books and other written materials they need to continue to learn and grow. Book collections from this drive will directly benefit Westminster School Districts. And she's also attached a flyer, which we'll email you as well. It has also been translated into Spanish and Vietnamese. Thank you so much in advance for being a part of this and for sharing the information to others. And then last ecomment is from John Varegi. And I apologize if I have butchered your last name there. It states, today, we found out about the E&amp;A exclusive negotiated agreement between the city of Westminster and Sheldon Development. We are second to think that the city would lightly consider packing housing here and help this developer financially. This is insulting to the adjacent residents and shows lack of understanding. At the last Sheldon Development public workshop, the local residents made it loud and clear that this is not desirable nor fitting for this community. Many points were made as to how this dense development would bring traffic, noise pollution, street overflow parking, loss of open space, loss of circulation in and through the Civic Center, and loss of long-sight line views. This developer has been shot down in many cities, including Huntington Beach, and has a negative reputation based on past performance and public comments. At the last workshop, when asked how this development team was recording public input, who was taking notes? The response was muffled but very obvious. No one from Sheldon Development or the design team was recording or taking notes, proving no thought was given about what the locals were saying. Why is this happening again? Many people will think that this is the same thing as last time and imagine that it won't get approved again. This is very deceiving, and we need to know how to stop this earlier this time around. Please consider this note a representation of the local neighbors. And if petition is needed or other documents forward, and we will distribute. Also include the rationale of which city representatives think this is a good idea, and why are they pushing for Sheldon Development a second or third time? Sincerely, your local Westminster residents on 15th and 16th Streets. And so that, that is all I have for ecomments. Now I have a few requests for speakers. First one is Don Anderson, and he's on a phone, a regular phone right now. Don? Don, if you hear us, you would need to press star six on your dial pad to mute or unmute yourself. Don, can you hear us? There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Good evening, councilmembers, staff, and viewers. I'm Don Anderson, and I live in Westminster. I'm going to talk about the Civic Center project proposed by Steve Sheldon. I watched the video of the March 24, 2021 Westminster City Council meeting, and there are several significant corrections that need to be made to information provided by Mr. Sheldon as to why we need a new City Hall. According to Mr. Sheldon, City Hall was built in 1968, prior to the Silmar earthquake of 1971, and the City Hall was not built to seismic design standards adopted after that earthquake. Therefore, City Hall is unsafe. Also, according to Mr. Sheldon, the building is unsafe because it does not have fire sprinklers. And if they were to be installed, it would trigger other building upgrades that would be cost prohibitive. Therefore, according to Mr. Sheldon, we need a new City Hall. Mr. Sheldon's information is incorrect. The existing City Hall was built in 1977, not 1968. Our City Hall meets the seismic building standards that were adopted after the Silmar earthquake of 1971. I started working for the city of Westminster in 1971, and I watched our existing City Hall being built. It was constructed to strict federal standards because it was built with a grant from the federal government. I worked in the existing City Hall from 1977 until I retired in 2008. During those 31 years, I worked in City Hall. I never felt unsafe. There was never a fire in the building, and it was never damaged by an earthquake. In regards to fire sprinklers, I recently spoke with Sarush Riberi, who was Westminster's building official for 20 years. And his office was next to mine in City Hall. Mr. Riberi, who retired from Westminster a couple of years ago, is a recognized and respected authority on building construction and building code requirements. During the 20 years Mr. Riberi worked in City Hall, he was never in fear of fires or earthquakes. Because City Hall is a single-story and has multiple exits, it is safe to occupy without fire sprinklers. Mr. Riberi told me if the city wants to add fire sprinklers to the existing City Hall, put on a new roof, and replace the air conditioning, it would not trigger other upgrades. This would be much cheaper than building a new City Hall and save millions in taxpayer dollars. Mr. Riberi, who is also a registered architect, told me that based on today's building costs, a new City Hall would cost a minimum of $10 million. Bottom line, we do not need a new City Hall. A final thought on city buildings. The City Council Chamber and Community Services Building that fronts on Westminster Boulevard were built in 1968. If the council chamber is replaced because of its age, shouldn't the Community Services Building also be replaced? And in closing, please remember, all money that all government agencies have, be it general fund, non-general fund, bonds, grants, fees, proceeds from sale of city parking spaces and assessments, ultimately comes from money collected from individuals, families, and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next speaker is Dana Emerson. Dana?
Yes, hello.
Hi.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'd like to reintroduce myself. I am Dr. Dana Emerson, and I am the dean of Coastline's Westminster campus, right across the street from you. I have spoken with you before about Coastline's commitment to being a partner to the city, serving students and the community. Coastline guides diverse populations of students toward the attainment of associate degrees and certificates, leading to career advancement, personal empowerment, and transfer. This is our mission statement, and it drives not only what we do, but it also frames how we do it. Coastline provides quality education for personal and professional development while supporting residents of the city and county and helping them achieve their goals. Coastline's Westminster campus is the home to our E S L and adult education programs. In these programs, we provide students with no-cost and low-cost instructional programs and classes. We recognize and embrace the diversity of our student population and the needs of the community. We know that many of our students would not be able to achieve their goals if it were not for the affordability and accessibility of our programs. We would not want to burden our students with parking options that are not affordable and thus prevent them from achieving their goals. We are very proud to be the public institution of higher education right here in the city of Westminster. During this past year, we learned just how much the community depends on us. We did and continue to do everything we can to help students continue their academic careers in the most challenging circumstances. We don't want to create more challenging situations for our students. As we prepare to welcome students back to campus, we need them to know that we won't create barriers, financial or otherwise, to their success. This is in relation to the Sheldon Project. I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration as we work together to address the needs of the community and our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Catherine Chang Fan. I believe I'm muting the right person. Catherine?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello. Yeah, good evening. My name is Catherine Chang Fan, and I am a former student and student worker at Coastline Westminster campus. I remember how happy I was after I interviewed and got a job at the Westminster campus. I wanted to learn everything about my job and were very excited to do more as time went on. I really enjoy working with the staff, the students, and the instructor. Everyone were very nice and helpful working at the Coastline, Eli, working with my family. When I graduated from Coastline, the staff gave me a party and told me how proud they are. I continued to work at Coastline when I went to the Cal State Fullerton. The staff was still very helpful and supportive. I enrolled at Coastline Westminster campus, and I wanted to improve my English skill and gain my citizenship. I knew that when I accomplished the goals, my pride and the life of my family would have positive trend forever. While learning English and preparing for the citizenship exam, I were able to get a job at the Westminster campus. I remember being scared because my English wasn't perfect. However, I really wanted and needed a job. I had an interview, and I got a job. Over time, my confidence grew as my English improved. I started to feel more comfortable speaking on the phone and having students and instructors. I received help and support from the staff at Coastline. I feel like they were my family. I was able to graduate from Coastline and from Cal State Fullerton too. With the help of the Coastline staff, I was also able to expand in my career and get a new job. I am grateful the Coastline were here to help me reach my goals. I still feel like Coastline is part of my family, and I know that I can always call the staff at the Westminster campus to help me with the new goals. Coastline were good for me, and it's good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next speaker is, and I apologize, Arvia Glass.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. So I just want to make a statement about the parking lot development project that will affect Coastline College's Le Jao campus. Speaking from experience, I took a class there, like my first time taking a class there. I was kind of confused about where to park, and so I just thought to be on the safe side. I'll try to find street parking. And I had a really tough time finding a suitable parking space that was an alternative to the parking lot that students normally park in. And so afterwards, when I realized that that's where we park, it took a lot of stress out of my commute to knowing that I wouldn't have to circle the block or anything to find a suitable parking space. And I just really hope that everyone considers that when we reopen, we don't want to do anything that causes more stress to students or discourages students to continue their educational goals. And I also want to ask, you know, or to say that we should we should always support students because supporting students is always going to end up being an investment in our own communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So that's all I have for speaker requests. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand, and I'll unmute you. Okay, so I have Phong Nguyen. I have a Phong and a Feng, so this one is for Phong.
Good evening.
Hi.
Just wanted to make sure everyone can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Westminster City Mayor, Pita, Vice Mayor Chi Chai Nguyen, other city officials, and everyone else who is attending this meeting tonight. My name is Phong Nguyen, Westminster City resident, and I'm here to voice out my concern about the Westminster City Hall redevelopment plan. When my family relocated to the Westminster city from Vietnam three years ago, the Coastline College was among the first few places that were recommended to us to seek support because of their ESL program, the only one in the Westminster area. I still remember on three of us carpooling in one car to attend ESL classes, and we would usually park in the free parking space next to the Freedom Park because it's usually free and not that far from the campus. Not too long after, the Westminster Superior Court took back the parking lot, which led us to choices, either park at the State Road for free or at the City Hall parking. My dad was in his seventies, and we had to purchase a parking pass, so he didn't have to walk too far. I fully understand the rationale behind the project, which can generate a significant stream of income to the cities. But taking back owner parking space would discourage a lot of students, especially the elder immigrants, from assessing basic education and prevent them from becoming productive members of society. I hope that Westminster City Council will seriously reconsider this decision, a decision that could negatively affect a large number of Westminster residents, most of which, due to their language barrier, are unable to express their concern here tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next speaker is Feng Nguyen.
Good evening, everyone. How are you doing? My name is Feng Nguyen, and I'm a former student and student worker at the Coastline Westminster campus. I remember how happy I was after I interviewed and got a job at the campus. I want to learn everything about my job and was very excited to do more in the front office and in the ESL program as time went on. I really enjoy working with the staff, the students, and the doctors. Everyone was very nice and helpful. Working at the Coastline is like working with family. When I graduated from the Coastline, I transferred to the Cal State Fullerton, and I also continued to work at the Westminster campus. I can show much confidence in myself and my English skill that I decided to apply for a higher job at the Coastline. The staff helped me prepare for the interview, and I got the job. Even though the job was a different campus, I was still a part of the Coastline. My family and friends were very happy for me, and I was proud of myself. I am no longer fearful of applying for higher jobs because Coastline helped me to believe in myself and become successful. I feel very fortunate to have a Coastline in my life. I tell everyone to go to the Coastline in Westminster because they really care about you and will you be successful. If you want to learn English, or rather, I would the high rate or get the degree, I'll get a job. You should go to the Coastline. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jody Boyd.
Hi, good evening, everybody. This is Jody, and I am a Coastline College student. Reminding you that the college, like our senior center, enriches people's lives. And that is why I encourage the mayor and everybody on the council and who works for the city regarding the Civic Center project. It's just a bad idea right now. It doesn't pencil out. It's not good to take parking away from either students or seniors. I can tell you that as a female, I have never parked in indoor parking lots, especially after dark. They are very, very dangerous. I think women can maybe better understand what I'm talking about. Moving on to, I'm really happy to see Agenda Item five dot two. I'm happy to see that is back on the agenda. I support its approval, and I am looking forward to attending the event. Item five point three. I'm really not happy about the second part of this, and this is the budget forecast for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-five. It serves to illustrate that our deficit issues did not go away. We've just been distracted by COVID and this proposed Civic Center project. It's clear the city needs to be more focused and creative with ways to consistently increase revenue and keep up with costs and maintain existing or better levels of services to our residents, visitors, and businesses. If the city moves forward with the Civic Center redevelopment project, taking money from wherever it can to make it pencil out for Steve, and then takes parking and services away from seniors as well as students, then the reality is, is many of us will have no other choice than to vote no to extend the sales tax. Everybody needs to be focused on saving the city financially, not putting lipstick on a pig and having a beautiful, shiny, new Civic Center. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Last speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening, Terry Rains. Some of my previous suggestions made their way into the final A D U ordinance, item three point two, but I still have some concerns. Number one, minimum size, page eleven of the H C D A D U handbook and Government Code six fifty-eight fifty-two point two C A state, the local agency must not establish by ordinance a minimum square footage requirement that prohibits an efficiency unit as defined in Health and Safety Code, section one seventy-nine fifty-eight point one. The two-hundred-and-twenty-foot square foot minimum should be removed from the ordinance. Number two, maximum size, why add or fifty percent of the living area of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater, to the attached A D U maximum size? It is not required for cities with an ordinance and negates a true maximum size limit. Number three, park impact fees, page fourteen of the handbook and Government Code six fifty-eight fifty-two point two F three state, and A D U is exempt from incurring impact fees of less than seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet. This should be noted wherever park fees are mentioned in the ordinance. Number four, solar panels, section B eight of the ordinance just added, and requirements related to social, relating to solar panels. Why not make it clear using the wording from page seventeen of the handbook, which states, newly constructed A D Us are subject to the energy code requirement to provide solar panels if the unit is a newly constructed, non-manufactured detached A D U. For the C E C, the panels can be installed on the A D U or on the primary dwelling unit. Number five, affordability information arena, remove low income and replace with applicants shall provide the city with all information reasonably requested for analysis and application of the unit towards the city's arena. Item three point six is the March City Net report, which thankfully shows higher outreach numbers, but is that due to the City Net Census done last month? Or is that expected to continue? On March twenty-fifth, I sent an email to city staff with suggested modifications to this report that I hope will be requested from City Net. On March thirtieth, I emailed city staff about encounters I had with thirteen homeless neighbors on March twenty-ninth, plus concerns about the census focus areas. Item five point two is a temporary use permit for an economic development project first discussed at the January twenty-seventh council meeting, not the twenty-fourth. The Inspoke Code seventeen point five four oh dot zero one five does not seem to indicate a temporary use permit is appropriate for the use and duration Councilwoman Ho first proposed. Would the permit be granted to the county, the property owner, or both? How long would it be granted for? Funding aside, why is this now a county project? Should a city economic development project really be organized by the county and a single property owner? Given the location and property owner, this may only benefit Vietnamese-owned businesses when all businesses in our city deserve the same opportunity and assistance. Item five point three is a report on the Civic Center project, the five-year budget forecast, and city assets proposed by Sheldon to fund the project. It is false to say no general fund money is being spent on this project, a substantial cost, who knows, maybe five-hundred-thousand or more in staff time already over four years, plus another couple hundred thousand for the Phase One Sequoia and Space Study Reports, and that's so far. Up to seventeen million of city assets, city assets plus two-point-three to three million in C F D homeowner special taxes, plus one-point-three million of city park impact fees are funding this project. Why should one-hundred-and-seventeen homeowners pay two-thousand dollars a year as special tax for thirty years to fund a new city hall? Typically, C F Ds are used more for project-specific infrastructure and benefit. Budget projections improve due to higher sales tax and additional cares money. The forecast does not include the estimated twenty-four-point-nine million dollars the city is expected to receive from the latest stimulus package. It is not known what restrictions will come with that money or how the city will spend it. It was fun listening to Sheldon's cheerleaders at the last meeting. Most of the comments sounded scripted. Kathy Green, who lives in Huntington Beach, not Westminster, and serves on the waterboard with Mayor Tom Sheldon, tried to defend Sheldon's character by going after mine, implying I made false statements. She said nothing, she had nothing to say about the actual project, though. My comments are based on facts and research. Staff is asking council what they want in this project, but who is asking us, the residents? No community meetings have been held since twenty-eighteen. Personally, I do not want any part of City Hall inside the police building or temporary seating inside council chambers. Sheldon has failed to deliver on his E N A obligations for almost four years now. The E N A states if substantial performance of the developer obligations has not been undertaken and performed, the E N A shall be terminated. So terminate it now. Redevelopment of the Civic Center someday may be a good idea, but not with this guy. So terminate it now. Redevelopment of the civic center someday may be a good idea, but not with this guy. Lastly, no new updates on the ongoing legal matters of Councilwoman Ho, Westminster School District Trustee Francis Nguyen, former Westminster School District Trustee Xavier Nguyen, or the protest filed against David Bo's liquor license, but stay tuned, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is the last call for anyone who would like to speak. If you would, please raise your hand. And I see none.
Alright, so I'd like to close all communication. Next we have consent calendar or matters lead under the consent calendar. I consider routine and may be approved by a single motion followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless member of the city council or staff request the specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion.
I like move um, three point six for further staff report.
Yeah, same here. Second.
So Vice Mayor Nguyen, who item three point six, am I correct?
Yes.
Same here, second.
Alright, so may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Move.
Alright guys, who, so councilmember Menzo uh, moved to approve the consent, but item three point six and Vice Mayor Nguyen, second emotion, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote please.
That's to approve the consent calendar except for item three point six. Roll call vote, councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Todd.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Alright, I'm uh, three point six, sitting at homeless services, that's more report. So may I invite interim Police Chief Campos? So who would like to give a report for this item? May I?
So if the chief is having issues right now, we do have Commander McCormick and our homeless liaison officer Roland Perez on the line as well. If you have any questions.
Good evening, Chief, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council and others in attendance. Uh, forgive my inability to get onto the uh, the signal. I was away from the laptop for a moment. And uh, I believe if we are currently on the City Net item on the cal- on the agenda.
Yes.
Yes, very good. Thank you for the update. We do have a number of people on hand to address any questions as to give a brief update. At this time, we do have a representative from City Net and I will relay to that individual to answer questions uh, on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. This is Matt Bates. Uh, on my screen it says Roland Perez. I, I logged in under Officer Perez's uh, um, login to this meeting, so forgive me, forgive me for um, the wrong name on my screen. But my name is Matt Bates. I'm vice president with City Net. Um, appreciate um, mayor and members of the city council, city staff, forgive me a few moments to address you this evening. Um, I just have a few comments and, and uh, the, the real Roland Perez is also on the call and um, and available for questions. So one, uh, just wanted to talk about two things. One is the, the monthly report. We uh, distributed that and I know that, that that report has been reproduced in your agenda packet. Um, and so I, I stand ready to answer any questions about that. Um, just there was a, you know, a question that was asked in, in public comments about um, about that report and, and whether there's an overlap with the census and um, the answer is no, we don't count. Um, the census work has outreach contacts, so that is an entirely separate database and endeavor. Um, speaking of the census, um, we conducted the census in Westminster on March twenty third and we concluded it on March twenty fifth. I think, I believe the last time we spoke was maybe the twenty fourth. Um, so the census is now done. Um, I have a, I, I see the team is working on it. I would say that the report is probably eighty-five percent of the way done. It's not ready to share with you. Uh, we have shared a one-page um, data summary. Um, so not the full report, but just a one-page summary after, because the data, you know, that uh, much of the data is ready to share. So we, we surveyed um, a hundred and forty-five individuals. That was the, that was the count um, for twenty twenty one. Um, the good news is that that is, you know, thirty-two percent less than the number was in twenty nineteen. Um, it is slightly higher than it was in twenty seventeen. Um, the other thing that's, you know, among, among many other things and, and when you get the full report, you'll have not only what's on the one-page data summary, but you'll have lots of charts and graphs uh, and, and including the uh, all the, the response, the copies, uh, the responses to all the questions in the census. Um, so lots of data analysis can take place there. But one thing that I, I found interesting, just to put one item, was that there were only twelve um, individuals that, that we counted in the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one census that were also in the twenty nineteen census. So um, that's not unusual uh, from our perspective. Uh, reality is that um, homeless, homeless neighbors are transient in multiple senses of the word. They're transient in the sense of lacking a fixed permanent address. You know, that's the definition that that provides. And so they can move from place to place, even from city to city, but also transient in the sense of being housing unstable. Um, many homeless neighbors can, can, can afford uh, housing or shelter for, for parts of the year, parts of the month. Um, but there are other parts of the year, parts of the month where they, they fall into homelessness. Um, and so the reality is just that in Orange County and, and not just Orange County, really California problem is that there are um, lots of people, millions of people living sort of housing unstable, um, on the verge, you know, spending more on their, on their monthly rent than they should from a um, uh, you know, to, to, to achieve stable housing. Um, so we've, we've seen that. The other thing that, uh, that happened, that's happened recently that I wanted to report on. Um, I was fortunate enough to be invited to the ribbon cutting ceremony for the Costa Mesa Shelter. Um, which is, uh, it's in Costa Mesa and it's in a partnership with also Newport Beach. Um, so those are two cities in your spot that have partnered together um, for a new shelter and just this week they started uh, taking first residents into that shelter. Now, that doesn't directly impact um, the city of Westminster, but um, we, we see and we find that all shelters in the service planning area that you open, and at this point, you know, that shelter, which shares Costa Mesa and Newport Beach, joins the Huntington Beach Shelter, the Tustin Temporary Emergency Shelter, um, and also uh, the two shelters in Santa Ana, the county shelter, which is the Yale Shelter. And then the city operated shelter, which is the Link Shelter. So the, the, what, what happens is that as these regional, as these shelters open up regionally, it gives uh, opportunities for people to um, uh, it creates opportunity, it creates openings within the beds. So um, you know, the, the regional shelter for Westminster is the, the, the Santa Ana Yale Shelter, the operated by the county. And so we can refer people into that shelter and that shelter has room because uh, people that who in, in Costa Mesa and Newport Beach who otherwise might uh, take beds in the Yale Shelter are, are choosing to stay in the Costa Mesa Shelter. So as these, as these shelters come online, it creates opportunities for our teams to make referrals and to um, begin the process uh, uh, housing, which we hope um, will lead long-term towards permanent housing. And with that, I'll, I'll conclude my comments and um, like the, the rest of the, the team here, I, I stand ready to receive any questions that you have.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bay for your report. Do we have any, any question or concern from member on the city council? Councilmember Ho? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Menzo.
Yeah, hi, thank you, Mayor. Um, sir, Matt, um, I have a question of when, or maybe this is for Officer Perez. Um, when we um, have an individual that needs a, a bed for the night or, or how, how difficult is it to, to secure a bed for, is it, do you find it, it's difficult to find one? Uh, or can you, can you uh, you let me know, please? Is it hard to find a bed for uh, an individual? Or is it a scramble to find a bed for uh, an individual?
It can depend on, I mean, it, uh, it can depend on the, on the case. I can say that it's um, um, that it's it's easier now than it's been in the past, you know, the years that we've been working in what the city of Westminster, because there are just more shelter opportunities. Now, some of that, as I mentioned last time, is related to COVID and, and funding that's flowed down uh, to the county because of COVID that has, that has been able to uh, shelter individuals. Um, but also just the new shelters coming online. Um, it can still be a challenge, uh, because it's, these are still voluntary. Um, you know, people don't have to go to the shelters if they don't want to go. Um, there are many people who are homeless who, who um, you know, we just have to build trust with them over time and, and kind of really sell the benefits of, of being in a sheltered environment. Um, because there are a lot of stereotypes, some of them are negative stereotypes, some of them are unfounded. But then frankly, there are some that just, you know, that are, that are congregant uh, living environment, which um, the shelters in Orange County are, are you know, classified as congregant living envi- environments, that's just not appealing. Um, so, you know, each case is different. Our goal as an outreach and engagement team is just to keep uh, you know, to keep offering to be available so that when the client is ready to go, we can connect them and, um, and hope that there's an available shelter bed. But I can say that um, as I said earlier, you know, there, there are more availabilities really than there's ever been. So when, when, when an individual is, is ready to go and they're motivated to go, um, we're optimistic of their chances of connecting them to an available shelter bed.
Alright, so it, it kind of sounds like you're, it's kind of like competition if if another city is also has somebody that's looking for a bed, uh, it's kind of like first come, first served kind of thing is whoever finds it and secures it first gets it. Is that kind of what it is?
Well, there's a system, yeah, there is a, there is a system that's in place, a referral system that's meant to be an equitable system. Um, you know, and, and I, the, I think the, the broader point that I was trying to make about the other cities, it's not so much the is actually that, that when these other shelters come online, it lessens that competition. Um, because now you have these local shelters in your neighboring cities to where, you know, those neighbors that are homeless in those cities can go to those shelters instead of going to the county operated shelter, which then creates more openings down in the Santa Ana Shelter at Yale for um, residents from Westminster that might want to, want to go, might want to go there.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Uh, from the Ho.
Sorry.
Oh, Vice Mayor or any other question?
I, I, um, I'm looking at the message here from Christine that um, Ms. Jody Boyd has a a question. Would you be able to accommodate her? Uh, I know she's um, interested and she's on the um, homeless task force, um, there.
Please, yes. Ms. Jody Boyd.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question for City Net. And um, regarding the availability of beds in the shelters. I would like to have better insight into during what hours are shelters, what days and hours are the shelters open? And do they take walk-ups or what is, how does somebody get intake to a shelter? Do the shelters have only certain hours of the day that they'll do intakes? Do they have to be accompanied by a police officer or uh, somebody from City Net?
Who would like to respond?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the first crack and, and of course, if Officer Perez wants to jump in, um, you know, the, I, I'll defer to him uh, if, if he wants, but um, yeah, the, you know, uh, uh, the, uh, there was a shelter that, that just closed, the cold weather shelter called the Armory in Santa Ana. And that was the only shelter that um, you could, you could self, that a client could self-refer themselves into. And they couldn't walk up to that facility, um, but they could, uh, they could meet at a, um, they could call ahead and then, and be picked up and, and driven on site. Um, to my knowledge, all of the shelters in Orange County are referral-based and they are, and they don't take walk-ups. Um, and the, uh, uh, issue there is um, is to, to cite the shelters, the, the shelter, you know, the, the operators and the, and the funders have negotiated with local neighborhoods and to minimize local community impact of having like, you know, lines of people or people congregating, you know, near the shelter, they've, they've uh, all, all of them, to my knowledge, have moved to a referral uh, system. Now, law enforcement can refer, um, City Net can refer, but we're just one agency among many in the county. There, I think, close to I think there are over forty agencies in the, in the Orange County Continuum of Care. Um, and any one of those agencies can make referrals as well. Um, some city staffs can, can make referrals. Um, so and, and, you know, depending on the shelter, there are numbers that, that individuals can call. Um, so we're happy to make those um, those connections for people within the city, the cities where we work, like Westminster. Of course, we're only on the ground in the city, uh, a limited time per week. Um, and so, uh, in that case, um, you know, I know that in, in cities like Westminster where there's homeless liaison officers, they can make those connections. Also, individuals can call two-on-one. Um, and two-on-one can, can help make those, those connections as well. The system really is, uh, you know, works hard to try to make it easy and to make those connections. But again, working within the community constraints of the local sort of operating um, guidelines and procedures for each individual shelter. Then to the first question about availability, you know, as a, as a homeless services provider, um, who we operate uh, shelters, so we're, we're in operation, you know, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And so I would love for um, our teams to be able to make referrals when people are ready to go, which would be at all hours of the day and all days of the week. But the reality is that the system's not, has not, has not moved there yet. Um, I think that we're moving that way in that direction. Um, but again, it's up to each shelter to decide sort of their policies and procedures on when they will take referrals. Um, I can say to you that most of those fall within kind of the, the typical, you know, Monday through Friday, nine to five work week. Um, there are some exceptions to that. Um, I know that law enforcement in many cases have exceptions where they can make referrals um, at nights and weekends where, you know, social services agencies like us at City Net cannot. Um, because the shelters will make exceptions for referrals coming from law enforcement. But again, the, the rules and the guidelines and the referrals, uh, 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 procedures are set by the shelter and the shelter operator in partnership with the funder. And so they can vary kind of, each, each shelter has a little bit different uh, tape on how they will, how they will receive intakes and when they will receive them.
Uh, in your March twenty, twenty twenty-one re- report, um, I saw that you have a specific case uh, on January twenty-first, twenty-first. Uh, there was a female client, then uh, City Net was able to put uh, her in hotel with the two children, right? And uh, I want to know the update on, on that right now. Are you, are they still in the hotel or they are now moved to uh, a show, family shelter? That's my first question. You follow, you follow what, what I'm saying? The second one is, uh, you know, I saw that number of cases that you have in, in twenty twenty. And there are a few cases uh, from one eight and one twenty-first of twenty twenty-one. So from one twenty-one un- until now, you don't have any specific case, uh, could I have say, could I say that it's, it's better, it's improved or uh, you don't have to, you don't have any uh, specific uh, problem or, or deal with, right? Can you, can you set some light on that?
Yes, no, so if you look at, at the bottom of page two, so the bottom of the preceding page, you'll see the, the street exit highlights from, from uh, March and from February. We had two from each of those months. Um, and again, those are just meant to be, and they're not comprehensive list of all the street exits for the previous month. We just try to pull out a, you know, a few cases each month that are representative and that kind of tell the story of how people become homeless and, and what our interventions look like. Um, so that's, that's one. And then the second, I um, I'll have to look up the, I'm, I'm looking at that, uh, at that story from one twenty-one, twenty-one. Um, so I will, um, I'll look that up for you, sir, and um, and I will, um, I'll communicate back through the city, through either Officer Perez or um, I think I saw Alexis Mittel on this call too. We, we can send it through staff and get your word on that particular case.
Okay, thank you. Right, is there any other question regarding this item? If not, so may I have a motion? I think this item, we uh, recommended action only to receive and file.
I make a motion to receive file, item three point six.
Second?
Okay, yes, motion made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Mayor Todd to receive and file. Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Todd. And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you so much. We don't have any public hearing tonight. Next item, regular business five point one, Orange County Water District and City Westminster Student Art Contest for twenty twenty-one. This is the item I'd like to propose to the board that, uh, I think this is the item that is a rec opportunity for a student at middle school and high school to showcase their talent and as, and at the same time, our city, we could able to raise uh, and a, and awareness, uh, regarding water conservation program to our, uh, in the past, I believe our city, we already had this program, but in the past, I think that we did not have, uh, a partnership with other, well, mental agency. So I think that this is, uh, an opportunity for us uh, to partner with OCWD and college and high school. And at the end of the day, we want to encourage, uh, water conservation awareness in our city. Uh, so I'd like to turn that to our city manager for this item.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. Again, there, as the mayor just mentioned, this is an item that the mayor brought it up to us and we, uh, looked into it carefully. Uh, we have done similar things before in the past to encourage water conservation. However, we've done it, uh, by ourselves this time. Uh, um, I was able to contact Mike Marcus, who is the, uh, general manager for Orange County Water District. And he loved the idea to, uh, partner with us to do such thing. Uh, the program, as the mayor mentioned, will be open to the high schools and the, uh, middle schools within the city. And then also, uh, uh, this will be done through the Golden West College, uh, art department, who will be judging the contests. Again, the, uh, the, since the school year is almost over now, we decided that this will happen next fall. Uh, between, uh, roughly September, uh, middle of September to middle of October, we'll give a better month. Plus or minus, you know, flexible, we can still talk about that. And then also the, um, the winners will be showcased, uh, in many, uh, many ways really on bus, bus stops, uh, bus shelters. And then also the idea was to also generate, um, a calendar with the winning, uh, 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 arts. The grand prizes will be, uh, initially when we had the city only, we were thinking three prizes. A thousand dollar for first place, uh, seven fifty for second place, and then five hundred for third place. When we get the cosponsor from Orange County Water District, we double the prices. So now we have two thousand dollars, two seven fifties and two, uh, five hundred dollars. And the Orange County Water District agreed that any money we spend on this program, we're gonna divide it by two. And we'll, she will get half, will, they will pay half and they will pay half. Uh, and the students can submit definitely online, uh, their contests, so they can be judged. And then, um, again, this will be funded by our water conservation fund that we, is part of our water rates, and we have been using that for many, uh, ways to, uh, urge water conservation. I also have a sample of, uh, the previous contest we have, I'd like to show you. Um, just so you get an idea, uh, what we're talking about. Let me, uh, I'm gonna try to share my screen here. Uh, let's see, where are they? I think it's this one. No, it's not that one, sorry.
No, that's that one.
No, that's, it's not that one.
But it says you're sharing screen.
Yeah, is, is it, can you see it now?
No, I, uh, I don't see it.
No, let me, let me do it again, one second. It's right there. Okay, you should see it now, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so this was the first place winner of the last contest we did. Uh, and then if you.
How long ago? Is that like five years ago or something?
Yeah, yeah, something, it's been few years now. If you look in, in the civic center now, actually, those po- those banners are posted within the civic center right now as we speak.
Yeah.
And then the second place winner at the time was this. So it says conserve water, preserve life. So this was the second place winner. And then the third place winner was this one. So this is the kind of, you know, uh, artwork, and hopefully this town will even get more, uh, more opportunities for more students to, uh, to participate. Again, the Golden West College Art Department will be the judges for this contest. And, uh, we will definitely, uh, provide any assistance we can. Uh, staff time that we're gonna spend on, that's gonna be on us, uh, it's gonna be handled by the water division. Scott Miller, our water superintendent, will be in charge of the department of this program as he has done before. So I think this is gonna be very successful based on previous experience encouraging water conservation. And that's my report.
Yes, I think, I think this is, uh, very meaningful and also very, uh, challenging as well as, um, encouraging for the students to enter the art contest, uh, for the meaningful, uh, um, ideas too, the good, uh, good idea. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a good project that the mayor, uh, brought up, so I, uh, I move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, I think that's a, thank you, Mayor. I think this is a good opportunity for, uh, the students to show their talents and to also earn some money to put some, put to good use for, um, their, uh, continued education. Uh, I think it'd be very helpful for them, so it's a good, good project. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your support.
Yep. The. Yeah, motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta, and that's to, that's to approve the student art contest to promote water conservation. Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Keeps them busy during this COVID time. Uh, yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Uh, yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Well, thanks everyone of council, uh, for your support. We appreciate that. Next item, five point two. Can we use permit for partnership with the first suburban Zoryo District on an economic development project?
Um, before you begin, if I may, uh, say a few words, um, I'm, I, I brought on this calendar, this, um, agenda actually, and wanted staff to look into the money, uh, which they have found, um, from the county of Orange or, uh, just district, district one. And, um, uh, being that they, um, are, um, looking to, um, looking at, uh, working with Bridge Creek Asian Garden Mall, um, Agent Garden Limited, where I live, uh, within five hundred feet of this location, I, myself. Um, for the rest of the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ho.
Alright, so, uh,
is there gonna be a, is there a reporter? We're just taking, or what are we doing?
So, member of the city council, would you like to have a staff report or you, uh, comfortable with the staff report?
I, I just have one, uh, just a comment if we can re- relay uh, to, um, where, um, our city manager can relay to the county. I, I, I think this is a good opportunity for our community, our, our business community, uh, to try to, try to come up with, you know, try to make some, some money that got lost during the, the, the COVID impacts and all, and, um, but I, I, I wanna also say that this is like also a good opportunity, uh, for a community unity. I just wanna make sure that we do, um, notify all the businesses, restaurants in the city and so we can have a good balance of, of, of businesses, uh, participating if, if they're way, if they want to participate. But I, but I hope that, you know, we're able to get, um, the restaurants with different, uh, ethnic, foods, restaurants, and, and, and use this, use this event to bring our ci- our community together and make it a, in, in our whole community event. And hopefully this can be a, uh, uh, it can be a project that can unit, be a unifier, help us unify our city a little bit more. So if we can, uh, please make sure that, that all our, um, restaurants in our city are at least made aware of the opportunity to be able to participate in this. And, um, that's just something I think we really need to work hard at to do, to make sure that happens.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will definitely convey the message. Uh, I know I've been working with Bridge Creek and Asian, um, uh, Garden Limited for the last few days. They have been very responsive. Uh, they have been really providing us with all the information we ask for. So I will gladly tomorrow, uh, ask them to definitely spread the word and, or notify restaurants as much as possible about this, uh, this, uh, this event that we are planning.
And my under- my understanding is that, uh, you know, it's al- it's always good to have part, to be partnered with, uh, the county or wherever that is, or whoever agency, whatever agency that we can, um, help the business in City of Westminster. So in this case here, the, from the county and the City of Westminster. And my understanding is that also that, uh, going directly between the Bridge Creek and, um, and the county is will be less, um, what is it, uh, less, uh, liable, uh, for the City of Westminster. Is that correct?
Yes, actually, the, ha- having the program between the county and the, and the private, uh, organization who actually owns the land is gonna make it much easier for us. This way, we don't have to have an agreement between us and the property owner and maybe an agreement between us and the county. So those agreements can be between the county and Bridge Creek themselves. And then the, as far as liabilities and so forth, the city will still be involved a little bit when it comes to issuing, uh, uh, a temporary use permit and then also maybe issuing some electrical permit, plumbing permit for the temporary, uh, event as we speak. So, uh, city also will provide some assistance, as I understand, with the health department in coordination with the, with the events.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Nor. I, I have a questions.
Please.
Um, this is the, uh, city manager, um, so, uh, the Asian Mall is only area that, uh, that's gonna have the partnership with the county. Is, is any other, um, establishment or places in, in the city that would like to participate in this?
The, the, uh, when, when, uh, when I, I talked to the, uh, supervisor Doe at the county with his chief of staff, they definitely, uh, mentioned that, uh, the qualifications for this program, they want some foot traffic to be in that area. Because I know, um, I know the report that Alexa, uh, did before, she recommended three different locations. Uh, the supervisor definitely liked the number one, which is the one on Moran for a couple of reasons. One is the foot traffic is there. Second is that the, um, the type of restaurant businesses concentration definitely meets, meets the requirement. So the county definitely liked that one, and then, uh, they are the ones who actually recommended. They said that, um, because of the location, because of the property ownership, and then that the fact that Bridge Creek is willing to do this directly with the county, the, the county highly recommended that arrangement. So they liked the location and this is the one they, they really recommended out of the three that we, the staff recommend.
And, uh, if any other establishment in, in the city are willing to come forward and would like to, uh, do the same thing individually, uh, as a private enterprise, the city will support that, is that correct?
Yes, uh, well, I, what I would say, uh, definitely, but they have to work through the county directly, make sure they meet the county requirements. And then if the county and them can definitely, uh, make the arrangements for that, the city will definitely support that. You're muted. You're muted.
Alright, is there any, uh, is there any other concerns?
Because, uh, you know, so this, I understand this, this project is a county funded and, but if any, um, if any, if any enterprise, uh, business enterprise in the city would like to establish an, an outdoor dining area without an individual privately, um, they wouldn't come forward and, and, um, the, the city will support those, is that correct?
I'm saying, I'm saying, I'll say it one more time.
Okay, so you, you're talking about, we're talking about, uh, the, um, county funded project here. I, I totally understand that, but if, if any, um, business enterprise in the city willing to, uh, uh, build an, an outdoor dining area, uh, independently without the county, uh, support, the city, our city would definitely support that, is that correct?
Uh, uh, Alexa, would you comment on that?
I mean, we would, we certainly welcome the application, the chance to review what they were proposing, um, you know, within the, the confines of health and safety, of course, we've definitely been more lenient here with, um, you know, the COVID circumstance and allowing outdoor dining and things like that. Something that's a little more pertinent, we would need to look at more carefully than something that's temporary. Absolutely, we would be happy to talk to anyone who can attempt something.
Thank you.
Without further, um, comments, I, I move to approve, um, the receiving file.
A second. Alright, we have a motion and a second for this item. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, that was a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Manzo to receive and file the item. Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries four to zero and record reflecting that Councilmember Ho, uh, has recused herself. She can come back now.
Councilmember Ho, can you come back? Alright, uh, next item, five point three, civic center development project report request by City Council budget forecast for fiscal years twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five and report on city access proposed at part of the civic center project. They have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. This is again, this item was deferred from last time and the direction to staff was to look into the city finances, uh, especially in the next couple of years. And then in relation to the, uh, expiring measure SS. So, uh, Aaron Backs and myself, uh, looked into the numbers and we, um, decided to go five years forward to really show the full impact of the SS measure expiring. Uh, we hit on three different, um, uh, subjects. One is the general fund itself. And then, uh, oh, what's gonna happen to it within the next, uh, five years? The second, we looked at the reserve fund. And then what's, you know, now we have thirty-one million dollars, what's gonna happen in five years? We also looked at the part dedication fund because this, it keeps coming up in the discussion of the civic center. And then we also, uh, kind of materialized and quantified the city contribution to the civic center project has also been mentioned several times. So to go over the details, I'd like, uh, Aaron Backs to, uh, go through the numbers and through the presentation. And we'll answer any questions that, after that, please. Go ahead, Aaron.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm gonna do a short presentation. Share my screen. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm gonna do a short presentation. Share my screen. Okay, um, so as requested by the city council at the March twenty-fourth, uh, council meeting, this is the budget forecast for the next few years. Taking into account the expiration of the voter approved local transaction use tax, measure SS in late twenty twenty-two. These are the same numbers that will be provided in more detail at a budget study session at a later date. So measure SS is bringing the city about thirteen million dollars a year in sales tax. Um, measure SS expires in December or on December thirty-first of, uh, two thousand twenty-two. So fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three includes six point nine million for six months of revenue. The last two years in this projection on the slide do not include measure SS revenue. And the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one is sixty-five point six million. But shown here, the estimate, um, is coming in around sixty-three point six million, which is about two million under, um, what the budget is approved at. And this is just a projection, but due to COVID-related restrictions and vacancies, we're, we're coming in a little under budget. And the majority of the increases in the projected years are related to the OCFA contract and unfunded liability costs. We have also included a million five annually for street projects in the, in the, um, this last three years. This slide shows the general fund projected ending fund balance or reserve balance for the next several years. The current fiscal year twenty twenty-one is estimated to end with thirty-one point nine million in reserve, um, which includes eleven point one million emergency reserve, two point seven million in redevelopment dissolution reserve and unrestricted, uh, fund balance of eighteen point one million. The general fund is completely out of money by twenty-four, twenty-five without cuts and with the loss of measure SS in this projection. To address the significant financial impacts outlined in the previous slides, uh, some substantial cuts would be need to, would need to be made to the city's budget. At the May twenty-seven, twenty twenty, two thousand twenty city council study session, staff provided these hypothetical examples of what cuts may be required in order to recover or to cover the deficit of losing measure SS. As you can see, seventeen million in cuts, um, would drastically change how the city is structured. Achieving the cuts outlined on the slide would be one point three million in general government cuts, which could, um, include eliminating ten full-time positions, all part-time employees and any, any paid city commissions. One point one million in cuts in community development could eliminate the community preservation unit, one position in building and severely cut or contract out the planning division. One million in community services, uh, cuts eliminates four full-time positions, all community events and recreation programs, plus the senior center becomes a part-time facility. Two point three million in cuts in the public works division could eliminate ten full-time positions and all part-time employees, plus reductions to parks and median maintenance. Eliminating forty full-time and all part-time positions in the police department doesn't even achieve the targeted twelve million in savings for this example. And again, these were, uh, examples provided back in May of two thousand twenty to achieve a seventeen million dollar cut in the general fund. The park dedication fund is another fund that is mentioned in the civic center development project. Revenue in this fund is generated by developments paying park and new fees that are used to increase park space and fund improvements of existing parks. The park master plan was recently completed and included many recommendations on improvements to be made to park citywide. The total cost of city pro- park projects over the next ten years is estimated at forty-two point five million. And the next few slides are project specific, so Alexis Smith, Smithall Community Development Director will take over.
Thanks, Aaron. Just very quickly, a brief history to bring it back to the civic center project. The twenty sixteen general plan designates the greater civic center area as an area for mixed use. So increased intensity of development, different types of development, really creating an activity center. Um, along those lines, the city issued a request for proposals in June of twenty seventeen. And the intent behind the request for proposals was to have developers propose what they could see as a vision here at the civic center under the city-owned parcels, in addition to some of the county-owned parcels to the, to the south of the site where we are right now. The council selected Sheldon Development at the July twenty seventeen meeting after hearing presentation from three different development groups and executed an ENA in August of twenty seventeen. The ENA has been amended three times since then, each time, um, due to the expiration of, of the existing ENA. Aaron, the next slide. So these are the funds that have been, um, generally speaking, proposed to be contributed to the civic center project. So first is the sale of parking lots within the, um, police facility parking structure. Two hundred and fifty spots to be sold to Coastline College and the developer estimate for that revenue is five million dollars. We would also be selling a parcel of land currently proposed at four point two five acres. The developer estimate of that land's worth is eight point five million dollars. Naming rights have been proposed by the developer to be roughly equal to about a million dollars in revenues. The, um, grant amount is at this point kind of unspecified. Grants, um, come and go and, and they're for a variety of different purposes. There are also proceeds sitting, um, that have been unused from the police department development back from two thousand nine. These have not been formally requested for use by the developer. There's two point four million dollars left in that fund at this point. And those funds do need to be used on the police building. There is an unknown amount of staff time that's been dedicated to this project at this point. And then continuing, there are two additional revenue sources that have been proposed as a part of the civic center project. And these would be generated by the project. The first is park dedication funds. So when any residential development is, um, developed here in the city, there is a cost, um, that's associated with that that is collected by the city in order to further parks. Um, they can be used for capital improvements. They can be used to obtain new land for parks. In this case, these development funds have been proposed, um, estimated at one point three million right now. That would depend on the number of housing units that were built ultimately. But these funds have been proposed to go towards the redevelopment of the civic center project. In addition, there's also proposal to institute a community facilities district, which is a district that would be, um, formed around the new residential development. Bonds would be issued. Those revenues would be put into the redevelopment project, about two point three million dollars. And then the cost of those bonds are paid over a period of thirty years by, um, ultimately the homeowners of the new units. And I believe that concludes the presentation. We are all here, um, to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Alexa, for your detailed report. So, uh, do we have any, uh, any question or concerns?
I do.
Please.
Well, I don't know if anybody wants to speak. I'll just speak glass, at least. Anybody else wanna speak?
I just have a question, real quick question on the, you know, on, you know how the term, the mixed use, um, is being used, uh, with this project? And, uh, you know, our general plan states that this, this district is a mixed-use district. In my view, and what I see in other cities, uh, mixed use to me is a, a mix of residential, um, retail, restaurants, uh, that sort of thing, um, yeah. Am I correct in, 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 in that assessment, um, Alexa, or? I mean, that's what it typically is, correct?
Yeah, there's all kinds of ways that people kind of use the, the term mixed use. Some use it, um, in terms of, of, of vertical mixed use where you have restaurants or retail on the bottom and, and housing on top. Horizontal mixed use is, is also, um, considered reasonable. The, the, the district as designated by the general plan is quite large. It's over a hundred acres in, in total. So the, the goal with this project and, and the RFQ was really to look, um, specifically at the, the publicly owned space here in the civic center. But yes, the entire district is envisioned for mixed use and, and, um, increased density. So some of the impetus behind naming the six mixed-use districts that are around the city was the idea that, um, we do need to grow. We know we were gonna have, we knew we were gonna have to grow. And how do we focus that growth in certain specific areas so that we can protect our single-family neighborhoods as they exist today from, from, you know, from higher densities? So the effort was to place higher densities within these six areas, including the civic center. So yes, we, um, we would look to this to have housing. We would certainly look at, at, to have higher density housing than we have in a lot of our neighborhoods. And absolutely, yes, office, uh, retail, entertainment, all of those things would be a part ultimately of a, of a good mixed-use district that fosters walkability and, you know, kind of a one-stop place to go.
So yeah, mixed use is not just residential only. Mix, mixed use is, uh, different uses, uh, besides, uh, just residential. That's what, in my view, what a mixed use is. Not just res- if, if you have no other retail or restaurants, had any kind of other shopping or something like that, to me is not a, if it's only re- residential, it's not necessarily a mixed use, correct?
Uh, I mean, in and of itself, a residential project is, is not mixed use. That's correct. Yeah, if you, if you look at the larger area, um, I mean, we do have civic uses here now that would continue. So it, it just kind of depends on which piece you, you talk about.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so anybody else wanna speak? I'd like to say, uh, words about this. So I've read the staff report and I've listened to all the discussion on, on this project. And, um, um, at our last meeting as well as, um, at the presentation this meeting. And in my opinion, there are a number of reasons why the city should not be building a new city hall at this time. Um, and should not be selling any city property and should therefore not be proceeding with this project. First and most importantly, the staff report tonight clearly shows that the city is facing a significant budget deficit in the next several years due to the termination of, uh, measure SS and other factors. As a result, we are currently facing a strong possibility of massive layoffs, which will need to occur unless a solution can be found quickly. That solution is not going to be easy and is going to take a lot of thought and effort by everyone over the next year or more. Given this harsh reality as we are facing, it seems very clear that the city's best interests would not be served by going forward with trying to build a brand-new civic center project and city hall at this time. As a secondary concern, I am very troubled by the fact that this project is not even close to what was originally envisioned when this ENA was started around four years ago. Um, the original project was supposed to involve our county properties and was supposed to re, to re-envision a large part of the civic center with a mixed-use project. But the county is no longer involved and the current project doesn't seem to be accomplishing what the general plan or the ENA originally intended. This was supposed to be a project that involved the adoption of specific plan, which improved the civic center into a dynamic area involving not only residential but commercial and office uses. As currently proposed, this project just acts residential. This doesn't seem to be consistent with what was originally planned and only benefits the developer, not the residents. Third, I am concerned about how much the city would be contributing to this project. As I understand, originally, the city wasn't supposed to be contributing anything more than just the land. But at this point, I described tonight's staff report. In order to make this project happen, the developer is asking the city to contribute a wide variety of city assets. Many of those assets don't have anything directly to do with this project. These are assets which could be used for other purposes. We really need to protect these unrelated assets because the city may need them if we are unable to solve the current financial crisis. Yet, in order to account for the loss of the county from this project, the developer keeps asking the city to contribute more and more just to make his project pencil out. Using OPM, that's other people's money, is acceptable in a private-to-private sector. But in a private-to-public sector, such as this, we cannot burden our residents with a special task, uh, like the CFD while the developer profits. The developer should be hands-off of our money, our assets. And that includes the police bond money he proposed to use for this project. So general funds dollars, when he said, um, parking spaces, uh, sale, parcel of land sale, naming rights, those are not from general fund, general fund dollars. That's not true. If we were to sell our parking spaces, we would get five million that would go into our general funds. Uh, if we were to sell our parcel of land, uh, for eight point five million, assuming that would go into our general fund dollars. And naming rights, assuming we get one million, as he stated, that would be for our general funds. So, but even then, after almost four years of this, we still don't know what kind of project we would ultimately get. After four years, I believe we have more questions than answers. We don't know what the quality of the construction would be, where it will be located, um, or what impacts it will create in the civic center with parking or otherwise. There are so many questions still outstanding. Why has it taken the developers so long to get answers to us? We need to keep in mind that this is probably the most valuable, valuable asset the city owns. Many different people use the civic center for many different reasons. We owe it to our citizens to make sure that any development we ultimately authorize would take the entire community into account. Will have fully analyzed all of the facts on each of the different uses and will be a wise decision for both our citizens and for the city in the long term. So I asked for a copy of the ENA and all of the amendments. I, I, I read through each page. And, and then, in looking through them, I think it's very significant to point out that the city council expressly put language in the ENA to address this possible situation. Recital F, which I underline. As incorporated by section one of the first amended ENA explicitly states that the developer understands and acknowledges the city that the city is not obligated to enter into a development agreement or sell the civic center property if, in good faith, the city council determines that such development plan or sale is not in the public interest. Not permitted by law, not consistent with the City of Westminster general plan or for any other valid reason. In sum, the reality is that, given the real and substantial financial issues the city is currently facing, it is clear that going forward with this project is not in the public interest of the city at this time. Given the fact that we are facing the possibility of substantial layoffs in the near future, after today's presentation, it is clear this project is not in the public interest. Therefore, I make a motion that city stop all work on this project. Direct staff to terminate all city consultant contracts on this project and to release Sheldon Development from any further obligations under the ENA.
A second.
Yes, may I ask the, uh, uh, city attorney, so, uh, what is the ENA? So what is it? What is the, uh, the reality of, of the ENA? And what is, you know, the last day of the ENA, I just want to do with, uh, legally?
Well, um, we have a, an item on the agenda tonight to, to hear these reports and asking council to provide direction. So the motion that's being made, I, I'm assuming the intent there is to provide the direction to staff that you want to, uh, if, could you restate that, the motion real quickly? I want to make sure we get that correct.
Yes, uh, my motion is that we stop all work on this project and direct staff to terminate all city consultant contracts on this project and to release Sheldon Development from any further obligations under this E and A.
Okay, so that, that would be a motion that could be made.
I have a question for you, uh, uh, city attorney. With all the works that enter, uh, between the City of Westminster and, you know, uh, and, um, the consultant for the past four years. And with the decisions to discontinue the projects while they are, there are still more works in, uh, in progress, such as the parking study and, and all the works and all, and the E and A is not expire until the November timeframe. So all the city, uh, official decided to cut off the projects. And I understand from last, uh, meeting, uh, the, the Sheldon Development Hall already put out five hundred thousand dollars for this projects. Is there any liability to the city when we make that decision without looking further into, with, without looking further into, uh, additional, um, uh, agreement as well as the, you know, the work in place at, uh, at this right now? I know the parking study is not done until May and the E and A is not expire until November timeframe.
Yeah, I, I think it probably wouldn't be appropriate to, to render a, publicly, um, a legal interpretation as to what the impact of this would be. That would be something we could have in, uh, you know, closed session, but I think that the motion can be made and, and what the impacts are is something that we probably need to discuss with Sheldon after the fact in terms of, I think what I'm hearing based on the motion, it's not necessarily, you didn't say anything about terminating the E and A, I just heard stop all work, terminate all the consultant contracts, that's trying to stop the spending of money, I, I'm assuming here, and releasing Sheldon from obligations. So I think that's what I'm, I heard.
Yes, that's what you heard and I'm just saying that I don't want Mister, um, our Sheldon Development to go on thinking that he's going to eventually get the, uh, uh, development agreement, the D A. Because, um, currently, um, there's a lot of, I mean, the main thing is this, the recital, uh, F, and I point that out because I think this is really not in the public interest. This is the reason why we wanna put, I wanna put a stop to this project. I mean, there are a lot of other details in terms of, you know, the timeline, that's not being met. Um, but I think regardless, you know, today, we don't, you're right, we don't have the financial, uh, feasible, feasibility study. But remember, on our, um, E and A, many iterations of the E and A, the, um, the version one, version two, version three, I think you're right, really, um, outline the timeline. And I think the timeline is just not being met. Uh, this financial, if it were, then we would have the financial feasibility study. We would have the parking study, but I am not basing my decision on that today. I am saying that, looking at the report and the financial report that I got today. And, um, and I already suspect that, you know, I didn't have those numbers, uh, on hand last time and I didn't, I wanted to see clearly. And that's the reason why at the last meeting I asked staff to provide today. And so now it's clear that it is not in the public interest. Remember that all the assets that we have, that he wants to tap into, these are the assets that we may need, uh, and don't think that the, you know, if, if, when it comes down to it, if we need to, we could sell the parking spaces and get the five million and that money will go into the general fund dollars, then we could use that. Okay, to sustain ourselves, our, um, our, our, you know, expenses and, and, and the cost of running, um, you know, our city. And then all those other things, so don't think those are not, those are assets and these are assets that, that, that could potentially boost our, our general fund dollars. And that's what we would use in bad times. So how we use those funds, those are our prerogative, that's not for the Sheldon Development to discuss. Uh, but this is what I'm saying is that I'm reading over the, the E and A and every word of the E and A. And this is what I see. So I don't know how, um, our, so I'm gonna leave it up to our city attorney to, to carry that out, but that's how I feel and we do have a, a second on the floor, could we vote?
Well, I made a, excuse me, Mr. Vice Mayor, I made a second on that motion uh, for, for the fact, uh, as Councilwoman Ho stated, I feel this project is not in the public interest, interest. All due, uh, due to our financial situation that's currently before us and the financial uncertainty that faces us. The loss of thirteen million to our operating expenses with drastically, uh, drastically, pressure our operating expenses. I mean, we're, this is the fact, we are facing devastating, devastating, uh, layoffs, devastating cuts to services, essential services. Uh, we are facing a potential financial crisis and it, to me, it's just, doesn't make any sense that we, uh, keep going down this road to go to the city hall that at this time, it's not just not feasible. We don't, we just don't have the means, we don't have the, the monies just are not there. As Councilwoman Ho stated, all these potential assets that we have, we may need them to survive, we may need them to keep the lights on. We may need them to continue our services for our large, uh, senior community that we have. We have, you, you can see, it can, uh, Diana Darber can testify how, how much uh, senior involvement that we have in our community and how much it depend on those for services. This, it's just we can't risk, we can't risk, uh, losing that. And if we need to use some of these funds to, 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 to continue that, I think that's something that we need to be responsible and make sure that we have those, those, uh, monies to fall back on if, if we need it. The building, we, like I said, it's just not, the numbers are just not there. It's all based on financial situation that we're facing and we just, it, there's just so many things that, they just have so many red flags financially that, that we just can't keep going down this road. And that's why, um, that's why I feel that, um, that's why I second that motion. You know, there's, there's so many things that, that, that we need to be responsible and, and just not put ourselves in a, in a situation that we're not gonna be able to get out of. And, and, you know, and the last thing we wanna do is have to answer to residents when, um, we just, uh, there's a saying that my son has and, and, and I like this saying and I, and we, we use it, it's, he says, hope for the best, but plan for the worst. Yeah, I'm hoping that things look up for us, but we need to plan for the worst. We need to make plans to, to, to put ourselves in a situation where we have some funds to draw from to, to, uh, to, uh, continue these essential services to our, our residents to, to prevent these drastic layoffs. Uh, it's just, it's just to me, it's just, we just can't keep going down this road and we can't keep, uh, wasting Mr. Sheldon's time and thinking that, you know, that this is feasible for us, it's not feasible for us and, and, you know, um, so I, like I said, that's why I second this motion and I, I just hope council can realize that this is, that's just not good for us right now at this time.
I, 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 what, what you? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
You know, I just, uh, first of all, I just wanna thank, uh, staff for a very comprehensive, uh, staff report. Uh, I wish, um, with your presentation of kind of a bridge, a version of your, uh, staff report, I wish just so you could go through a full presentation with all the, uh, all the information, including the staff report for, for the records. Um, you know, I just wanna to, uh, is anybody, it, does the staff, the city staff do any fact check when Mr. Sheldon speak and present facts? Um, I just wanna comment, uh, on, uh, Mr. Anderson, you know, the, uh, retired city employee who is a servant on the planning commission. He mentioned the city hall was built nineteen seventy seven. Whereas, uh, Mrs. Sheldon presented, uh, presentation, he mentioned the, the city hall was built nineteen sixty eight. Um, did, did we have, do any fact check on all the information provided to the council? Or it just, uh, city manager?
Uh, uh, from my knowledge, I'm sorry, from my knowledge, no, we did not do fact check on those, but, uh, I believe Mr. Anderson is correct. Of the year the city hall was built, the sixty eight probably came because the other buildings were built in sixty eight. So maybe an assumption was made that city hall was, was built at the same time.
So is that, is, is it also true that, uh, it's safe for city staff or city hall?
Uh, yes, actually, this, this, this subject came up a couple of times before. We've heard it, all of us heard it before. So I looked into that, I, I checked with our building official and, um, the building official went through the plans of city hall. And then, um, uh, he found out that, uh, the building is very safe based on the following facts. City hall is built out of nine inches wide, uh, blocks. We have four sheer walls on the four corners of the buildings and then with a massive size. Uh, the roof, or we call it the, uh, the roof of the building is made out of plywood and rafters. And such rafters are connected to the sheer walls via steel straps, actually. And that's what Mr. Anderson was referring to. It was, uh, built after the summer earthquake and therefore they did use straps, uh, for that construction uh, in, in, in both directions, the north, south and east, west directions, which makes it really very stable and very safe building. Um, so, uh, uh, also the, um, the, uh, the, so this is for the earthquake itself. So no doubt in the building official mind and also, uh, he's a licensed engineer, of course. And then we heard what Sirush's input was on it from Donna Anderson. The building is definitely safe based on the type of construction. If this was a tilted up building, yes, in previous earthquakes, tilted up buildings had issues with the connection between the wall and the diaphragm, we call it, or the, the roof. But this is not a tilted up building and the roof was very well connected to the, to the walls. So seismic wise, earthquake wise, no problem. The other issue that was mentioned is the fire. And, and the building official contacted the fire department also. And the fire department input was, uh, the building was built without a sprinkler system, correct? Because it was not required at the time, so that makes the building legal as it stands. Also, the fact that we have six exits on a single story building, uh, it makes the builder with all the doors have panic hardware, they makes the building very safe. Uh, no, no doubt about that, and this is from the fire department, fire department as well as the building official.
Well, thank you very much for that information, but let me ask you this, um, you know, when city staff, city manager, I, I know, uh, you know, Mr. Yusuf, you're a new city manager, okay? Leadership in the past, okay, whose responsibility to ensure that to do the fact check on all the speaker, all the presentation presented to the city council? So that we, the council have in, informed, this is, you know, presentation.
Right.
Responsibilities, is that the city manager or is this, uh, city staff, who, who responsible to bring the recognition to the city council, who is responsible?
I, I, I would say that falls on, on the city manager and then the way, the way I think it's being done in the past, just like you heard it in the staff report tonight. Yes, Mr. Sheldon said that those assets, we wanna use those assets in the, uh, in the, in the project. And then he was mentioned that it will not affect the general fund by whatsoever. However, so the correction was mentioned tonight is that no, some of those assets are general fund. So this is kind of how the, uh, the corrections were made. So we tried to make it in a staff report by staff. We went, I don't think in the past, we kinda critique the presenters, whichever, whoever it is to say, no, he or she made these false claims. But we usually try to counteract them by staff reports mentioning the facts to the best of our knowledge. So the way that we mentioned, we corrected the, uh, general fund versus non-general fund is the, how we listed the assets, city assets in the report and what the source of those. And that's why we mentioned the, uh, park dedication fund, the reserve fund and then the general.
Okay, so can you, would you be so kind to make sure that from now on, all the presentation that are being made at the city council, to the council, please have somebody fact check the information and, and notify the council if you find anything that is not accurate.
Will do, yes, absolutely, will do.
Okay, thank you very much, um.
I, I, I.
I'm, I'm, I'm not done, let's, let me, uh, um, you know, we, we listened to, uh, quite a few, um, the, the lady from, uh, Coastline, she's the president, I forgot the name. Uh, and several, uh, students, uh, former students who ESL student, uh, from Coastline College and the, um, it doesn't sound like, uh, it didn't sound like they are supporting the project. And it's, it's, uh, not, according to Mr. Sheldon, who was saying that, uh, Coastline Community College is supporting projects. Um, anyone who have a little knowledge about finance, financing, uh, looking at this project and look at the presentation that presented by Mr. Sheldon, could see that there's no way that, uh, financial, uh, there's no way that the, this project can be done uh, without selling additional city properties. And like, uh, council member Ho mentioned, using other people money. This project, this project cannot be done, period. You know, we, 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 we look at it, we say it so many times during the council meeting, but it's for tonight, tonight's a, I'm, I'm, I'm really surprised to, to see that there is some logic in this council to see that there's no, there's no way this project can be done with no cost to city, it's gonna cost the city a lot of money. And, and we, for, for years, we go against the staff, the city staff recommendation. They were reporting to the council, jump up and down telling us, telling us, hey, this, we don't get the cooperation from the developer. This cannot be done, it's very difficult. And no one seemed to listen to the city staff. And finally tonight, there's some, the council, um, supporting the city staff to protect the city interests. And, uh, Christian, would you be so kind and, and, and mention the, uh, um, the motion that, uh, council member Ho made earlier?
I have, um, a motion to direct, uh, direct. I have a a motion to direct, direct. Oh, excuse me, I'm trying to read my writing.
I can I can jump in, Christian, if you want.
Yeah, if you could, that would help. I'm trying to read my own writing here.
That's okay.
It's a fact that women have better writing than men.
You know, I don't know about that, but I've got some pretty good chicken scratch here. So it's a motion, it's a motion to stop all work on the project. Direct staff to terminate all consultant contracts and leave Sheldon of all obligations related to the E and A.
Okay, does that mean that we terminated E and A?
That's that's not what I heard.
Well, I don't really, I, you know, I'm gonna legal aspect of it up to our city attorney. I know the E and A goes to November and it doesn't end until then. So if we don't want any, we don't wanna, we don't want Mr. Sheldon to incur any costs if since we feel if we vote tonight that we wanna put a stop to it. And if if it continues, it would be on him. I'm not sure how it goes, but this is how I feel and this is the motion I wanna make. So I'm gonna ask question to guide us in that.
Yeah, let me, let me just add to that, that I and you quoted to it, so I looked it up here. But you know, the the language in the E and A in a couple of different places does talk about the fact that the city is not obligated to enter into a development agreement or to sell the property if, in good faith, the council determines, which I, which is what I'm gathering tonight is what you're doing. If the council determines that that such development plan or sale is not in the public interest. Or for other
I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, so that seems to be what the motion is really, it's based, it's finding that this is not in the public interest. That's what I heard a couple of times. I think even Councilmember Monzo said the same.
Can I speak?
At the case modify motion to completely terminate the E and A with Sheldon, Mr. Sheldon.
Can I speak to the mayor?
Thanks.
Yeah, first of all, I would like to thank the staff for the detail report about, you know, the the financial situation that we are facing without SS measure. But understand that this is two different, you know, area. One is public, general, it doesn't touch general funds. And the other one, SS measure is different. What I think is, you know, as a leader, as a representative for the city of Westminster, we have to find ways to bring in the incomes, not to depend on the tax measure. The two, two, two separate, you know, projects. I'm not trying to say that, you know, we have to go with 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 the, you know, one way or the other. But we I have, we have to understand that two things totally different. For the southern projects, it's not touching general fund, period. That's number one. Number two, that's the city representative. Whether it's staff or leaders, I think we have to find better way to make money, to make incomes, to bring in incomes, not to not to tax people. So I I I I still think that we need to to work on it. Now, as far as you know, to be fair with Sheldon or to anybody, if I were to put out five hundred thousand dollars, I'll be hurt if the cities all of a sudden stop, stop my projects when there are work in progress. And the E and A is not expired. I think it's it should be a mutual agreement between the city official and the Sheldon consultant, development, development. What I will make a substantive motion as we let let the city council, I mean, let the city attorney and the city manager sit down with the with the southern development and come up with a decision. Maybe the decision is going to stop everything or terminate the project, doesn't matter. But as long as we have a mutual agreement, I think that's will help us, you know, less liability to the the the, you know, the what Sheldon already put forward. I am very, very, very upset if I were put into, you know, Sheldon, you know, true. Because, you know, all of a sudden, we are working really hard here, put out money to do everything that we can. And now, all of a sudden, you shut off without even talking to me. So my my substitute motion is for the city attorney and city manager to get together with Southern Development, Steve Sheldon, to go to talk about this before the council make any decision.
Oh, I I have something to say about that. Okay, so when I read through the E and A and hear a lot of background noise. When I was reading through the E and A and the amendments, two, three amendments. I know that early on, it was made known and the Shadow of Development might already made aware that they do this, enter into an E, the E and A at their own risk. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney. And so by that, I mean, really, I mean, remember, this is supposed to be a one year E and A contract, which dragged on to four years. So now we're at a different time. You know, it's certain events have taken over and this have taken, shall I say, you know, such as COVID is, you know, has affected us. And so as you you see from two thousand seventeen or two thousand sixteen seventeen until now, four years has passed and we're at a different time. And so today, I'm talking about, you know, when we look at the current situation, the financial situation that we are in. I see that, yes, perhaps if we had, you know, move along with this project three years ago, then there's nothing to talk about. That was a different time. And, you know, anything to happen after the project was done or approved or the DA has been approved, then there's no backing out. And I think that that stated very clearly, once the DA is approved by both parties, the DA takes precedent, supersedes the E and A. That is really clear, but we haven't gotten there yet. So unfortunately, this is not three years ago, this is four years later, okay? Now, we we're in a position where we look at, okay, our finances. And so we've already, staff has done a really great job of shed light, shed lighting on that issue. And we're not saying that we depend solely on the SS measure. We're just trying to say the, you know, the financial situation, the condition that we're in and looking at everything, the cross section of our our situation, our finances. If I were to say that maybe this is not a bad development, maybe this is not a bad idea to develop this civic center, but it's at the wrong time. Because at this time, it is not in the public interest of the city at this time. Okay? Not not at the time we approve this, but now it is not in the public interest. So I know that maybe we're missing out, maybe we are passing up on a good deal. But so what is our other option? That if we were to, I looked into that, this, you know, to seismic retrofit this building costs a hundred fifty thousand to two hundred thousand. If we really, really worried about, yes, it's gonna crumble, it's gonna fall. And if we were to go this route, and as you heard our city manager earlier stating very clearly that he spoke to and you are, I don't wanna repeat that, but you heard that the building stands and it's very strong and it's going to withhold during earthquakes and so we don't have anything to worry about, it's very safe. So when I make a decision, I look at different angles. So if I were to retrofit this building to make it safe, because that was the whole purpose, to make it safe, then it's only gonna cost a hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand. And if I were to have to make the decision, do something with the building today, assuming that it's unsafe, then I would put that, that I can afford a hundred fifty thousand to two hundred thousand. Leave all the other assets alone. My assets are my prerogative to use and I would not use it that way. And I think to for to comment or to, you know, for rebuttal of Vice Mayor Chi mentioning, and I think I made it really clear, that general fund dollars, if we were to sell the parking lot spaces, two hundred fifty spaces or five hundred to get five million, that's five million that goes into general fund dollars. Okay? And you can fact check that. And parcel of land, okay? So all of those things would go into the general funds that we could tap. Yes, to keep the light on, we're gonna need, maybe we'd like to have plan for the worst. I I like that and because I also keep that in mind all the time. So like I said, if we, before we even develop and move along and try to shall I say, I'm not sure we're benefiting our residents if we move forward with this project. And I believe that Mr. Sheldon Development may run into hard times right now because they're thinking of other very creative ways to finance this. And I don't think it's really a good time for us to carry on that burden. So again, you know, this is my motion.
I just want to comment that what I heard from Councilmember Hall and Councilmember Collis, that they said that it's not in the public interest. I I don't know where you you get that form. But if I heard it from the last meeting versus this meeting, I think we have a equal number of people who support the project, number of people who unsupport the projects. Okay, so based on that, to decide that, you know, based on the people comment today saying that people are not in, this is not public interest, I don't think it's the right thing to do, to say. The second thing is that for the five million dollars, I believe from last meeting, we heard it from, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong. But I I think we heard it from Sheldon Development saying that they can, they can go without that five million dollars if there, if Coastline will not commit it to that. So, you know, if you use that five million dollar for general fund, then let's let's clear it out with Sheldon Development, whether they, he said that is true or not. Okay, so again, my motion is that because the, even the attorney right now doesn't know that whether we, you know, we should terminate the projects now. I think it's best, it's safe for us as a city to have the mayor, I mean, the 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 city attorney and the city manager to sit down with with Sheldon Development. Maybe the answer is they both, we both saying that, yes, it's time, it's better to stop right now. And, you know, to save Sheldon money and then, you know, how we can work out, you know, so that people that he's not hurting with, you know, putting out five hundred million dollars and, I mean, five hundred thousand dollars now. And now all of a sudden cut off like that. So my motion still, my substitute motion still, that having the city attorney and city manager to talk to Sheldon and then we can come back and decide it next time.
Okay. I'd like to second, can I speak, I'd like to second Vice Mayor substitute motion because I want to handle that professionally. I think that even the even majority of city council wish not to continue the project, at least I think the manage, the city manager and the city attorney I need to sit down with Mr. Sheldon and explain the circumstance. And I believe that Mr. Sheldon, he he will understand, rather than, you know, we terminate a project and terminate the E and A because I concerns about the legal issue of E and A. I understand that, you know, that maybe the language of the E and A, but I'm not attorney. I'm not attorney, so I'm kind of really concerned. So I think that I support Vice Mayor Nguyen. I submit to motion because I want to handle that legally and professionally.
Let me just interject here real quickly, because I wanna make sure we get on, handle this properly. Before that motion, that substitute motion was made, Councilmember Doe made a substitute motion and we didn't get a chance to see, was there a second to that motion? Okay, not hearing a second to that, then that substitute motion would die. And then we have this other substitute motion that was brought by Councilmember Nguyen and that was seconded by the mayor, Mayor Ta.
Sorry.
We have, excuse me.
Sorry, I, on that one by Tai, I heard it as an amend, just as wanting to amend or the original moment and the original motion and not as a substitute.
Okay, I thought I heard it as a substitute, but either way, there was no second.
Well, yeah, we'll clarify for the purpose of the minutes, but note that I didn't, I didn't see it as a substitute.
What was the amendment? Because I didn't hear, we, nobody heard it, I didn't hear it.
What I heard was that he wanted to terminate the, terminate the E and A. That was what the motion was.
Amendment?
Completely. We have cause to terminate the E and A right now. It's not, you know, financially, it's not what, it's not for the public interest.
Just wanna say something kind of I kind of trying to break things down to, like, kind of make like some common sense of things. As far as
We do that though, before we do that, let me just make it clear then, there was no second on Councilmember Doe's motion, so therefore we have the primary motion, which was made by Councilmember Ho and and seconded by Councilmember Monzo, so that's on the on the floor. And then we had a substitute motion that was subsequently made by Councilmember Nguyen and seconded by Mayor Tree Ta, so that we're gonna vote on that one first eventually here. It's up to here when you wanna vote on it, but right now, Councilmember Monzo is making some comments.
Yeah, I just wanna be a comment to the council, the council, the mayor and Vice Mayor Nguyen. I like to break things down as common sense is like, so this talk of the city hall, a new city hall, in my view, it's a want, it's not a need. When you have the finances to go and buy buy yourself some pretty nice shiny new car and you have the money and you have other cars sitting in your driveway, if you have the money, you go do it. You, when you wanna want and you have the finances, you do it. We don't have the finances, it's not a necessity, it's not a necessity, it's a want. We don't need a new city hall, our city hall is not falling apart. Our city hall is not gonna crumble when it earthquake. We're, it's fires, it's safe. A new city hall is not a necessity, it's it's a, to me, it's a want and it's not something that we need right now. If our financial situation was different, then it'd be a different conversation. But that's not what's in front of us. And 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 the uncertainty, my view is the uncertainty in front of us is what's, it's why I'm looking at it this way. The other thing is that we don't, still don't know how many businesses are gonna survive. Right now, our projections are based on numbers that were in before. How many businesses are gonna survive the impacts of COVID? How many businesses are gonna be around in six months, a year? We don't know. A lot of those businesses gotta start A, a lot of those businesses got to start paying back. If they're, if they were making half payments on their rent, they're gonna have to start paying them back. You know, are they gonna be able to generate enough revenue to, to stay afloat for, you know, for the future and the year? Are they gonna be around in a year? We don't know. Or could our numbers change? Our sales tax revenue drop even more? We don't know. We just don't know, so just more, a little bit more that I think we need to keep in mind.
I, I, I like, I like to respond to yours. You know, I think that if, if we get the money out of the general fund, then that's a different story. But this is not coming out of the general fund, whether or not that you are building the, the new civic center or not, it's still the same. Now, with the perspective that you're saying that, okay, if we don't get the, the SS measure, and, and, and then, you know, people, we have to tax people, then that's a different story. I mean, you know, we are not trying to, trying to marry both of the, the project into one. I, what I'm saying is, general fund is general fund, the other project is stand alone. And, and so, you know, and, and my goal is, you know, always think that, you know, we have to look further. You know, as things change, we, we need to bring this city up to the next level. We are not stay, trying to stay, you know, as a state of gold, and, and stay where we are, whatever, you know, whatever we have right now is right now, we can ever move, move forward. I am looking forward to move to the next level. Now, regardless, you know, you have different thinking, I have different thinking, each of us have different opinions, that's fine. I don't have any problem with that. All I'm saying is, the, the decision, the, the, the motion that I substitute today is to wait for the, for the city council, I mean, for the city, uh, city attorney and city manager to talk to them. And we, you know, the next, after their talk, they may agree that, okay, both of us, you know, it, it is probably wise idea to stop the project right now. So they, the staff can come back and say that, okay, we came up with the idea that, you know, it is best for us to stop the project, when, and, you know, we need the city council to approve it, and, and, you know, it's easy for, for every one of us. And at the same time, we don't have to worry about the legality of, of it, or the professional that we're dealing with, like the mayor said.
All right, anyone else?
Oh, we have the motion, we have a substitute motion on the floor, I think we going to go on substitute motion first, and then.
Yes, so the substitute motion is voted on first, and that motion was basically to direct the city manager, and, yeah.
Before, before we vote, let me ask the city attorney one question then. Do you, you, do you confident that if we stop this, we vote to stop all the works? And, and I don't know that, if there's a terminate, I, I heard the terminate in there too. Will, will the city enter, well, you know, will liable for, for, for any lawsuit or anything like that?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that would be appropriate to have that discussion right now in an open forum. But I didn't hear terminate the E and A, what I heard was terminate, for the city to terminate the consultant contracts. So, that's what I heard. So I, what I'll say is that we have a motion, and it's, it's a motion that could be made. And there's always, I, I think there's a lot of language, as I mentioned in the agreement, that talks about the city not having to go forward with the project if they don't find it to be in the public interest, that, that's what I keep hearing.
So do you think, do you, do you think that it's safer for you and, and the city manager to talk to the developer before we make that decision?
Well, that's, that's certainly one option. And we would certainly be happy to do that. And we could talk with the developer, I, I don't know what would be a better option in this situation, that's for the council to decide.
All right, anyway, we have a substitute motion on the, on the floor.
Okay, so the substitute motion is to direct the city manager and city attorney to sit down and meet with Mr. Sheldon, and to come up with a decision on, on, on how to proceed, or whether to terminate.
All right, roll call vote please.
All right. That was originally made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta. Roll call vote, Councilmember Do.
No.
Councilmember Ho.
No.
Councilmember Manzo.
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
That motion failed three to two.
All right, now we have the original motion.
And again, the original motion was made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Councilmember Monzo. It was a motion to direct staff to stop our work on the project, and to, to terminate all consultant contracts on the project, and three, to release Mr. Sheldon from all obligations under the E and A.
Roll call vote please.
That was the motion made originally by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Councilmember Manzo. Roll call vote, Councilmember Do. Councilmember Do.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
No.
And Mayor Ta.
No.
The original motion carried three to two.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have common and request for agenda item from City Council, agency member, including A B. One, two, three, four report, and reply. Who would like to go first? Vice Mayor.
Yes, I, I can go first. Yes, again, thanks, staff, for their detailed report on the, you know, the financials situation. I want to ask staff to look into, since we have the ADU decided, you know, to, to, to have a new ordinance for the ADUs, and I, what I, what I see is that a lot of people have, will have a problem with their parking area, parking spaces, since we allow them to build more ADUs, junior ADUs, and we still have the same requirements for the number of the grass area, grass area in the front yard. I think we need to look into that, to see if we, what kind of percentage that requires right now, and what can we change to make sure that, you know, they can be able to build more pavements, so that they can park their cars instead. I don't think it's right to go with the same requirements when we allow them to add more ADUs or junior ADUs on their lots. So, you know, I, I'd like to ask for the staff to look into that and present to the council next meeting.
All right, so is that request for future item, right?
Yes, request, request.
Roll call vote.
All right, that was a request made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta. Call vote. Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
I think some council member background is kind of really noise. Okay.
I think it was Vice Mayor's.
All right.
All right, well, that motion carried five to zero.
Thank you so much, and who would like to go next?
Go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to thank you, staff, for your hard work. All the staff report, outstanding job. I have a question, the city manager. The, the office hour, the, the, the front desk, are we appointment only right now, or it's, it's open for business?
No, it, it is appointment only, however, pretty soon we are going to discuss the possibility of opening city hall based on the tiers that we are in. So we are starting to discuss that, and then, and see, we will come back to, to council with the recommendation as far as when we can open the hall.
Okay, so you need city council to do that, or?
Not really. No, I don't think so, we just want to coordinate with our safety coordinator, and then talk to the, all the departments, make sure everybody feels comfortable, and then, you know, consider the state, what the state is deciding, and what the county, and then we'll base our decision on that.
Okay, I, I, I hope that you can make the necessary changes to aided the, our residents and businesses.
That's, that's already being considered as we speak.
Well, and I, I just want to thank you, city manager, and, and Interim Chiefs Police Campbell's, for your quick decision to post the hate crime stats online, on the police department website, because these appear to be the number one concern to our residents with all that Asian hate, discrimination, and violent attack that's going on across the country, and then, and everyone's number one concern, am I safe in the city? So with, with that crime stats posted, we put out the information that showed transparency, and at the same time, we inform our community as to what's going on, is, is there a real concern here of being attacked, if you, just because you, we are Asian? So, and, and just, I just want to know if, is there any way that we can have it, a, a, a policy written on, 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 in that sense, that we continue to post hate crime stats on the police department website until the city council say otherwise? Or do we need a council decision to make it permanent?
Chief. You're muted.
Yes, Councilmember Do, thank you for your observations. But I, I don't believe we would need any council action on this, I just think it would be a good best practice for us to continue to post the statistics on Asian hate crime. Because I sent, I think it believes, I believe it sends a message from our city, from our police department to the community, that it, it is a ongoing high priority, not just because it happens to be topical at the moment.
Okay. Best practice, does it mean it's not gonna be a written policy that's saying that we, we shall, the PD shall put out information and post the, the test, the statistics on the website?
I can discuss with my staff, council member, regarding the, the efficiency of that, and, yes.
I appreciate, I appreciate it, chief.
Yes.
I, I don't have any, anything to, for the agenda, I just want to wish everybody a safe week, so, thank you.
All right, who would like to go next?
I will, I thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank staff for all your hard work, as always, you know, it's not easy what you do, and putting, and then putting up with us is not easy as well. So thank you for that. Thank you to the Diana Dobber and everybody at the community service for all your help on the, with the vaccines and organizing with the family resource center and getting all that, trying to get the information out there to the community about the vaccines and the safety about it. So thank you for all your hard work, and everybody there at staff that's always helping with the, everything with COVID related. And I just want to, just also say with the, something I've been telling people, when I see them, it's like, and everything with the, that was happening right now with, in our, in our country with the, with Asian hate crimes, it's, it's something that I just always encourage people to to not be afraid to speak up, you know, to, to, it's, it's our responsibility as humans to say, it's not acceptable, this is not right, and say something to somebody, report it. But at the same time, I think it's also our responsibility to, to change it, you know, to be that change. And, and, and I've always tried to do this in my personal life. You know, people, get to know people, you know, when you see somebody, and when you're out shopping, or you're, you know, doing your daily routines, and, and you see somebody out there that, you know, that you don't know, that doesn't look like you, you know, you know, don't be afraid to say, hi, hello, how, how are you doing? How's your day going? And, and stop and make, and, and start a conversation with somebody that doesn't look like you, you know? And that's the only way you're gonna really start making change. And, 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 and when you speak to somebody, you get to, you start in these conversations, you realize at least I did, you know, getting out there and talking to people, knocking on doors, and talking to people at the grocery store and, and wherever, and we have a lot more things in common with people than, than, than we, than we have differences, and just talking to somebody, it's really just, you, you, you realize that, and, and, and in the end, you, you might make a new friend, and, and, and then, and then if you make a new friend that comes in from a different ethnic background than you, and, and then it's fun to, to learn the different cultures of other people, and, and two different traditions, and, 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 and it's fun, I, I mean, that's, that's the great thing about our country is that, that we are a nation of immigrants, and, and, and that's what makes us strong. That's, that's the, that's the, the foundation of our country, is the immigrant, uh, immigrant communities all through our country, and, and just start a conversation with somebody, and then you'll come out better at the, in the end. So, so thank you for that, and just thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ho.
Yes, I just have a few agenda. First one, I want to thank staff for providing me with all the financials and everything I asked last time, you did a great job. Appreciate that. What I'd like to agendaize for next time is the cost comparison for ADU licensing in different cities. I, I hear the differential between our city, what we charge, and what other cities, this surrounding cities charge. I heard there's a difference of twelve thousand dollars, I just don't know where the difference is, and I was just, I'd like to see if we could agendaize that, and talk about the, maybe have a breakdown, so we can clearly respond to our constituents. And so that's the first agenda, can we vote on that?
All right, I honor that request.
All right, okay, that was a request made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Mayor Ta. Roll call vote to have that item. Councilmember Do.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Thank you very much, and the last agenda I would like for next week would be to report on, for staff, planning staff, planning department to report on the status of our planning department. I know there's been excessive, or a huge jump from previous years, you know, ADU applications in the recent years, I'd say since two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen. I know when I first started talking about ADU, it was like, we only had eighteen applications, and then the last number I heard was a hundred. So I just don't know where we're at, and we just want, I'd like to see if I can get a status report on that. If you can talk about staffing, you talk about how behind are you, and what is the process, the average process that holds it take to get the entitlement, like the whole entitlement process. get the entitlement, like the whole entitlement process? Please give me an update. So that will be my agenda.
So may I ask uh customer Ho, what is the difference between your first item and this one?
Well, the the fir the first item would be the AD licensing fees.
All right.
Fees relating to money. And so and then the second item will be just the uh process of entitlement and staffing.
All right.
So that would relate to, I guess that would answer the question, like, how long does it take rather than piecemealing my questions? I think if I could get a status a report on on the planning department, like, are you just so I have an idea, are you so behind that if somebody tells me um an application is taking six months? You know, um, I mean, I have no clue right now. Um, you know, so um are you short-staffed and what is your um what are you doing about that? Um, are you farming out some of the work? Um, so uh as COVID is winding down, are we working um more efficiently uh at home? Or are we coming back to work and is that going to change the entitlement process and and the length of the entitlement process? So that's kind of what the gist of what I'm asking.
So uh you need a full report from staff, right, for future meeting? All right, I honor that request.
All right, that was a request made by council member Ho and seconded by Mayor Ta. Roll call vote, council member Doe.
Yes.
Council member Ho.
Yeah.
Council member Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Ta.
Yes.
And motion carries five zero.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, and it goes, okay, so uh I guess that's uh that's all for today. One of the thanks are the members of city council and city staff for your time, for your dedication. One of the thanks are the member from the community uh for participate in our meeting. Our next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, April twenty eight, twenty twenty one at seven P M. Meeting adjourned.